Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the study session for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for August the 20th, 2018. We will start with citizen comment on any agenda items. And I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who hasn't signed who would like to speak on any agenda item? Okay. We will move through public comment and move to item number one, the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee update. Do we have a report? Please join us. Would you all like to speak at citizen comment?
Yes.
Oh, please come to the -- we'll go back to citizen comment. And you may go to the podium when -- that's okay. When you get to the podium, please adjust the mic so we can hear you and give us your first name and last name and spell your last name and give us your address, please.
We had 125 Simms Place. Mayor Starker, town members. Come here today because we're from a underrepresented neighborhood, community, probably 30 homes, closest to the commuter rail line. I don't know if you've heard about all the commotion and comments on social media that are being made about the noise of the train whistles. I don't know if any of you even know where Vista Ridge is. Do any of you know where Vista Ridge is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, it's, like I said, real close. Simms Place, Swadley, Tabor, those three streets there. But the only residential streets that are being affected by Wheat Ridge or Wheat Ridge in Wheat Ridge, other than the new development that's just down the street, a lot of developments are going in because of the traction or the desire for communities to develop high-density residential. Our problem is, of course, the noise. We're like three houses away. My wife has epilepsy. She's had a seizure when they first started it. It's been a concern for us. We have no place to go. We're retired. We're always in the community. We're always in -- nearly in the home. And I have a simple request. Obviously, I've talked to a lot of people, none of whom were able to do anything for us about the noise level or the -- basically, they're honking the horn all the time. Okay? I mean, it's constant from 3:30 on till -- they're saying till 1 o'clock. It seems like there's a couple of dead periods in there, but during the day and early in the morning, of course, that disturbs our sleep. And the only solution I could come up with after speaking with everybody all the way up to the FRA, that it's mandated by federal law, the noise level, the horns is what I'm referring to. And the problem is, it's quite distracting. I understand that a quiet zone could take up to a year to get approved, possibly more. A-line is an example, two and a half years, still, I don't know if they even have quiet zone involved in their area or not, but we need one. The only solution that I could come up with is a fence, a high fence, a fence that could eliminate the noise, at least reduce the noise to where it's livable. I mean, you can't carry on a conversation if you're in the yard. You can't get any sleep.
Can't keep the window open because of this?
Yes, it's a problem all the way around. And since we're so underrepresented, I doubt if there's too many people from Wheat Ridge. I do know people from Wheat Ridge that are upset about it. There are people right up here, not far from here, that can hear the horns because they're on top. Sound seems to be projected high from ridge to ridge. Where on Ridge Road, the people on the Wheat Ridge Ridge down 38th Avenue to 44th, they hear it. So that's my request is money allocation being put to use to help us out. That's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Okay, we will move on to item number one, our agenda, Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee update. Welcome, if you'd like to reintroduce yourself and give us a presentation.
Push to -- oh, that's loud.
You'll know when you've hit it.
Yes, you do. I'm Joy Op. I'm at 46 Hillside Drive.
Well, we have citizen comments here, aren't we?
Hi, and I'm Amy D. Pierre. Good to see you all again. So as you know, the Sustainability Committee submitted our action plan recently, and we are just here as a follow-up and to make a couple of extra comments. Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal for the continuation of the RASK into an implementation phase. Since our presentation of the proposed Sustainability Action Plan, the team has met to determine logical potential next steps. We are aware of tight budget restrictions and the inability for the city to assign a sustainability coordinator at this time, so the team would like to offer the attached Phase Two proposal that was included in your packet. We have identified a small budget that we would request to be earmarked for the RASK as needed to begin implementation of the low-cost and high-impact items proposed in the action plan. Amy's gonna go over the proposal.
So just to provide a small overview of what was in the packet, essentially, the RASK would like to continue its purpose by helping with the prioritization of those recommendations to the city and then working together for implementation of the June 2018 action plan goals. To begin implementation, RASK will lead communications and community engagement efforts to build awareness and enthusiasm around environmental sustainability and the action plan itself. We'd like to continue to hold monthly meetings rather than bimonthly as we were and would like to continue as a volunteer organization with the city's support and continue to provide ongoing progress reports to council on what is happening with the action plan and implementation. And then, we do have a case with needing new members, as we've had some people who are unable to continue past the year term that we were allotted, so we'd like to propose hosting an application process and extending that one-year term to a two-year term and then to have the initial review of the application by the current committee members for final review and approval, then by the mayor and city council. We can draft that process, the application process, for the council's review and approval as well. Then finally, as Joy mentioned, we would like to request an initial budget for the coming year of $18,000 to begin the work around our environmental sustainability goals for the community and city of Wheat Ridge at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from council? Mr. Matthews?
Do you have specifics on where you're intending to spend 18 grand for the coming year?
Yeah, so the action plan identified a lot of items that are low-cost and high-impact, so I'll just run through a couple of examples. In the Energy and Efficiency section, item 1C was to evaluate the completed audits for facility improvements, not included in the EPC, and implement the energy efficiency measures that Excel Energy spoke with us about. That's their PI program, their partners in any energy program. In the Renewable Energy segment, we would like to engage the community in setting and implementing renewable energy goals. That's just a communications and engagement objective. In the Transportation segment, we would love to make resources available for residents and community groups and businesses about the importance of compact mixed-use development. I think that's really relevant to what's going on with a lot of the development here in Wheat Ridge. In the Water segment, we would love to begin some education and outreach campaigns regarding stormwater quality. And of course, the Communication and Engagement segment, really, most of those items are very low-cost. One of the things that we had tossed around was getting some branding and some identifiers for the RASK so that the community can begin to recognize the messaging that's coming from the RASK, so a small portion of that would be for some branding and communication around the RASK.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. I would really like to see a breakdown of a budget, how you're going to delineate funds, how you're planning to disperse them, your application process as far as where these monies would be going, and I just, I have a really hard time giving you $18,000 without seeing an exact breakdown of how you plan to spend that money. You know, as the city council, like, our main job is to determine and make sure that our tax dollars are spent wisely, and so I was hoping with as thorough of a presentation as you guys provided for us, that you guys would give us a very thorough budget as well.
We completely understand that, and I believe in the year that we created this 101-page document, we may have texted the volunteers on the committee. So we have communicated about the budget, and the reason that we chose the $18,000 was that each, we have six topic areas, and we could use $3,000 to implement at least two to three goals in each of those areas. We really looked at, like, if you look, if you have your action plan, on page 62, there was a resident survey, so we really looked at that survey and what the residents of Wheat Ridge are looking at and wanting to, their city to do. So creating walkable communities, encouraging water quality improvement, promoting renewable energy, encouraging water conservation, increasing energy efficiency for city buildings, promoting renewable energy, wind or solar, in the home, ensuring availability of and access to public transit, encouraging construction of green buildings in the community, promoting energy efficiency for the community, encouraging biking or walking instead of automobile use, and diverting trash from the landfill. Probably the last one, starting composting program, is the only topic here that didn't get at least 50% of the respondents to say that it's either an essential or a very important component of environmental sustainability for Wheat Ridge.
Ms. Dozeman.
Sorry, just a follow-up question. So what is it that your organization is going to be doing differently from the organizations that we already have in place, whether they be private or public, that already reach out and engage residents in these kinds of efforts? I mean, I know that we have a glass recycling organization. I mean, like, how do you fit in and how can you justify that kind of a cost? Like, what would you be doing differently?
So I recognize that the city does have some communication regarding some of the sustainability practices. I think what the RASK would do is really brand those messages to make them more targeted. I think there's some opportunity to really build some community enthusiasm around some, you know, some of the programs that we would, that we would love to share. There are, you know, programs around composting that the community is asking for. You know, I get messages, because my name is up on the Wheat Ridge website, as being the Sustainability Coordinator, so, you know, I'm getting a lot of feedback from the community already, just asking for some of these programs to be implemented that we had placed in the action plan. So I feel like when our, when our organization is official and formally in place, that we'll be able to target a lot of the messaging.
And I think to that point, one of the, one of our biggest requests was to identify hiring a sustainability coordinator and realizing that that's not an option for the coming year, not attempting to potentially fill that gap, but to serve a little bit as a city so you can see some return on investment, and maybe next year when we have this conversation, see how valuable that would be to hire somebody in that role as well.
I also just wanted to just point out that the city has asked for this action plan, and so now what we are offering as a volunteer committee is to begin the implementation of it on a volunteer basis. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
You kind of just answered my question, but just to clarify, so the $18,000 request is, request, is that all hard dollars or is some of that in facility usage and stuff like that?
That's a, that's a very good question. I think a lot of that could be, you know, considered to be staff time and facility usage, that it wouldn't necessarily need to be hard cost. You know, again, since our committee was disbanded and hasn't officially gotten a blessing, if you will, to continue work, we haven't targeted our budget. So what we're asking for at this time is kind of a two-part item, one, to officially begin work as volunteers, and then to be allotted a budget that we can begin to prioritize the action plan that we put together.
And all those dollars would go straight to the programs, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And all under, you know, Patrick's supervision. We're not just gonna start spending money without, without approval and without, yeah, without review.
Mr. Pond.
Thank you. I'm kind of in reverse order since we're talking about it that way. I don't disagree with the idea of moving forward as we go into the budget cycle, asking to have a little bit more specificity in the breakdown of this. It seems like you've got some pretty clear ideas of what you want to do, so given the chance to answer your first question, which is, can the committee keep going? It sounds like one of the first tasks would be for the committee to prepare something for the budget cycle that's a little bit more specific for us, that's responsive to the comments that have already come up, which I agree with. I don't, I think it's reasonable to ask you guys to be, to be a little bit more specific on allotting that, understanding that there may be some things that we can't move forward to, so they're with, as we get into it, so you can kind of try to align those things a little bit more carefully when you come back. Your first question here is, I think, about, you know, continuing the committee and coming, you know, to a longer term, and I agree with that. I think, based on the work that was previously done, and I think it would be to our benefit to leverage the work and the group and even bringing in some new people into, into an extended term. I think that would be good for the city. It truly is volunteerism in the way that we have communicated and discussed internally ourselves that we want to see and what we've also seen in response to our surveys. So I think it's in alignment, and we're not, I don't think tonight we're saying yes to $18,000 worth of budget because we're not approving budget tonight, but I believe the, I would like to see this move forward in the budget process, and I'd like to see it move forward with more specificity that's already been asked for.
Thank you, Mr. Rand, and then Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you. First, thank you for all your hard work in this. I've been very supportive of this from the beginning because I think it's, it's not only important, it's our responsibility, and there are a lot of citizens who are asking for many different things. So taking the last year to filter through all that, have those conversations, thank you. I would like this to move forward. To me, it just doesn't make sense that we spent all that time and energy to bring this to us and not do anything with it. But moving forward, if we can have a specific, you know, plan specifically where the dollars will be spent would be great, having that on our website also, so citizens can go and look and say, hey, this is where, you know, $5,000 is going, so forth and so on. My other thing was, because I know I wasn't here when you had the discussion on a coordinator, what was the cost of having a coordinator?
I don't know.
Number?
No. It's, I don't know, it's a $50,000 to $60,000 a year job in most communities.
And that's why we specified a coordinator level rather than a manager or director that would command like a $70,000 to $80,000 annual salary.
Okay, so moving forward, I want to move forward, so say we move forward and it's a two-year term for the volunteers, so all of you will be kind of sharing that responsibility? Is that how it's gonna work?
Sharing the responsibility for what?
For the coordinator position or?
Yeah, so Amy and I have been elected as the leaders of the RASK, and so one of the first things that we will do when we reconvene is make sure that the committee wants for us to continue in that leadership role, and I don't see why we wouldn't go forward with the same way we've been working, which is indirect communication with the city, with council, with our representatives, through Amy and myself.
Okay, what I think is, I know for years the city has had maybe one organization or entity, but the implementation wasn't there. And what I see here is that we've got it, we're ready to go, and we're starting out with minimal cost, right? And then it'll come back in a year, and you'll present the next level, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, absolutely. And to, to have a committee of 12 volunteers is a very strong group of people. There are communities that operate with, you know, a staff of maybe three or four that kind of run sustainability as paid staff positions, so this is a totally different kind of method of operation is working as a volunteer organization. I think it gives us really strong manpower, brain power. We have some phenomenal people in our community that are really willing and ready to offer their services.
Yeah, I appreciate that, so thank you.
And I just wanted to speak to that committee of 12. Basically, how we envision that is we have the six topic areas, and what we did this past year is we had two team leads in each topic area, so they kind of had ownership, and we worked in small groups together on that. And so seeing the 12 members of the RASK committee being the team leads or the steering committee, if you will, and involving community members and engagement around those topics, so even extending that volunteer support beyond just the applied applicant resident committee into the community as well to engage people around the topics they're most interested in supporting.
Mr. Fitzgerald, and then Ms. Dozeman.
I just wanted to clarify, you, you're going to provide us with a suggested replacement policy or appointment policy for members, and number two, how many members do you need?
We, we quickly took the previous application, so there was an application form that we all had to fill out that basically listed our experience, and we were encouraged to attach our resumes so that we were vetted around environmental sustainability and our expertise in that area. So we would, again, want to do that and make sure that everybody would, you know, why are you interested serving on this committee as well? And then just some, some bullet points that we had looked at was that extending that one-year term to a two-year term with an option to reapply upon completion, and then accepting applications during a specified call for applications period, and if and when a member is unable to continue due to whatever unforeseen circumstance. As we just spoke about, we recommend that the committee consist of a 12 resident steering committee with two team leads for each topic area, and the ability for those team leads to create an active community group that goes beyond the steering committee. And then just saying, the current committee members would review applications for initial approval for admittance into the committee, and then pass those on to the mayor and the council for final approval. And then, as Joy kind of mentioned, that we would self-elect an overall committee co-chairs by a vote. We found that it's just been great to have two of us rather than a single leader, if you will, but the co-chairs is really nice to kind of split it up and then identify the people who hold the most expertise in a topic area to lead that portion of it.
And do you have vacancies now?
We will.
You will? Any idea how many?
At least three, if not more.
Thank you.
Ms. Dozeman.
So I think this is more directed at Patrick. What would be the process of making this committee a formal board or commission with the city?
Well, if you want to make it a formal board or commission, you'd probably have to, you could do an ordinance. Some of our boards and commissions are in the code, but if you just want to make it a special committee, that's just, you know, you can bless it through a motion or a resolution of some type.
So when the application process opens up, is it going to come back to council for an approval?
I think.
Yeah, we would do an initial, initial review, you know, to make sure someone's qualified and interested and committed. They could come meet with the, with the RASK as a committee and then pass those applications on to you. If you would have questions, they could come to a study session.
Yeah, I think that, I think that that kind of, just in my mind, defeats the purpose of the whole process that we have in place already as far as the way we nominate and appoint to boards and commissions, and it would make sense that if you guys are asking for a budget of this kind, that you would become a formal board or commission and that we would go through the same process that we already have in place for others.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the work you've done on this, and I know it's been a tough task to get your arms around how to make Wheat Ridge more sustainable, and, you know, as it relates to this specific ask, I have a hard time putting money into education efforts, building awareness efforts, and encouraging residents to do X, Y, and Z when the alternative could be that if there were specific strategies and tactics that the city could use to see a cost savings of at least $18,000 and use that as an example to move forward and encourage residents to take, to allow us to lead by example versus going out and educating, creating a brand, all that just seems somewhat superfluous in that the real work to be done is to make the city more sustainable. So let's look at specific ways that in the next year, this work would be able to give the city at least a rate of return of the $18,000, if not some factor of that, because it seems like educating and communicating with residents about what they should or shouldn't do, that I don't know that that can be accomplished with $18,000, and I don't know that the city should be in that role, but if we can take the, the water, the waste, the energy that the city is using and somehow reduce that or make that more sustainable, that's gonna save the city money, and that money then could be used for these types of programs moving forward. But I'd hate to go out and tell the citizens, you need to do this and you need to do that when the city itself hasn't done everything it can to be a leader in that role. So that would be my concerns is setting aside the issue of not having a detailed budget. I'd be opposed to spending the $18,000 on this without some hard metrics as to how much money the city is going to save by spending this $18,000.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I completely support all of your guys' work, and I appreciate, again, the massive document that you brought to us and that we went through before. And I also support having a sustainability coordinator, and it is one of our goals as a city council that we had figured on our, in our retreat. And so I thought, as it sat, that we were going to look at options when it came to budget time to see if we could put, you know, pay for a sustainability coordinator. Until then, I would like for you guys to continue on as your committee. I think that because of the large scope of skill sets that you need, I think it's important that you guys are able to review the applications and find if you're losing someone who was strong in the transportation department, to be able to look through those and find someone who has that strength and can plug that into that. So I, I think that I would like to encourage you guys to develop a new application and term process. Again, I don't think any of us were, were like, yeah, we'll just give you money tonight, but I absolutely support financially supporting this plant, these ideas and these plans and moving forward in our community, and I know that oftentimes, when it comes to sustainability, it doesn't necessarily mean that you get a dollar return on it, but you get a return in long-term other ways that go into your community. So thanks, you guys.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All you people. All you people at home that are listening tonight, and I hope are listening and watching, and I wish you really pay attention here. I feel like I probably should be passing out cigars. What you're witnessing tonight is the birth of a new bureaucracy within the city. No one knew we were pregnant. I don't think anyone thought we started to start putting money away for college, but what we have here is the birth of a new bureaucracy. I voted unconditionally on the sustainability committee on the condition for myself, and I stated it verbally at the time, that it did not become a bureaucracy, that it was the citizens, and you guys have done a wonderful job to help us show where that we could maybe make some inroads in the city as being sustainable, but I was not in favor of starting a new bureaucracy. And you want eighteen thousand dollars tonight, you've admitted you want an FTE, a full-time employee, if you will, or whatever that stands for, and then, well, we'll have a coordinator because it's cheaper. And then the coordinator eventually gets promoted to be director. Well, you can't have a director without someone to direct, so now we have a division in the city, a new sub, a new division like Parks and Rec and everybody else where they, all of a sudden, I mean, you can hire a guy for sixty grand, but it's going to cost you a hundred grand with Bennys and with Carr and expenses and office, and then you need a secretary and the whole nine yards. I'm reminded of Wheat Ridge 2020. In 2005, the city council decided to start Wheat Ridge 2020 that was supposed to support getting strong homes in Wheat Ridge. It was going to help us attract more people and strong families, and it was supposed to be self-sustaining after five years. Well, it's now about fifteen years later and about fifteen million dollars later, and they're not self-sustaining anymore. Their original charter to promote strong families in the city went away, so they morphed into and evolved into party planners. I'm not saying Wheat Ridge 2020 doesn't serve a purpose, don't get me wrong, but you see how that happened. It started out as something that was going to have last for a specific amount of time, get a little bit of money, and then be self-sustaining and not cost the taxpayers any more money, and it's grown. Nothing approaches eternal life on earth as much as a government agency, and we are creating now a new government agency. If we vote for this, or if we give consensus to give you money eventually, we're creating a new government agency within the city, and it will be here forever, and it will do nothing but grow a budget. That's what it will really grow. So I appreciate the work you've done. I had envisioned that it would stay as a citizen advisory committee, just what it started out being, where it would come back to us and give us advice or what, and some feedback onto how to make the city operate more efficiently. But as soon as you start asking for budget, and just like tonight, you've got great intentions, I know, but you just asked for a slush fund, eighteen thousand dollars, and you've got six or seven items you might want to spend it on, and a lot of those items that you brought up are already being done. It would be a double effort. So I'm not, pardon me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not in favor of moving forward in creating a new city agency. I applaud the work you've done, but I cannot support spending tax dollars on where we should already have division heads in the city that you go to the division of parks or division of public works and say, this would help you be more sustainable and more efficient, and then we let existing staff move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Or did you want to respond to Mr. Mayor?
I think that that was kind of somewhat of the direction that I was going in, is that I would like to see this continue on an ongoing basis. I think you guys have done great work, but it was my understanding that this was going to be an advisory committee, and in my mind, I think that it would be a natural evolution for you guys to become a board or commission in which you do guide the city and have input and advise us on certain things, but I agree that when we're allowing for you to have a budget and we're allowing you to create the application process and review the application process before it's coming to this government body, then we are naturally creating another arm of this government, and I honestly don't support that, even though I do support the work that you are doing.
And I'll just respond to read the last sentence of the 2035 vision statement for Wheat Ridge. Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle and are proud of their hometown, and that is essentially what we're looking at. The initiatives that we've put forward, I think, Larry, the last time we spoke, you asked about assumptions, and I think you were referring to assumptions on a global level, and essentially what our plan looks at and really speaks to and considers is the local relevancy and the impacts of our suggested strategies, and it may cost a little bit of money, eighteen thousand in the grand scheme of things is not a lot, but when we're talking about clean water for better public health, or less trash for a more beautiful, cleaner city, or we're looking at energy efficiency so that we have lower financial or even overall energy costs, when we're looking at renewable energy as a way to potentially even be self-sustaining rather than having to purchase energy, and then improve multimodal transportation to support all of our residents, the young and the old, and then for the active living and that connection to the outdoors that you speak to directly in the 2035 vision statement.
Mr. Matthews.
Are you suggesting, then, that we take the fifteen hundred dollars away from ADAT because that's exactly what they do? That's what I'm saying, you're doubling up on where we have other committees, other agencies in the city that are doing exactly what you're proposing. And just because we want to see you stay as an advisory board doesn't mean we disrespect you or your efforts and that we don't care, but if you understand what I'm saying, you just mentioned about promoting multimodal, well, we have someone who's a professional lobbyist that runs a group in the city that does that already. Do we need a second group? I don't think so, but I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Ms. Dozeman.
So I think one of my questions would really come down to, would you feel that a board or commission of this kind would be able to continue your work and your efforts in a viable way? Or is it a situation where you want to continue with the eighteen thousand dollars and the way you've already been formed, and like that's the bottom line?
Without speaking with the rest of the RASK, I guess I can't quite make the determination if you ask us to continue as a commission, that's a different set of guidelines, and I believe that we have to have representatives from every district. That might end up limiting the application process, and I would hate for it to get politicized in the application process. I don't know if that is true or if that would happen. I guess we're leaving it up to you. We are, at this time, a volunteer committee that's ready to get to work, so however you would like to see us formed is, we're giving you this proposal. This is how we envision ourselves moving forward. Yeah, do you have anything to add on that?
Ms. Hoppe.
I'd like to see you guys stay as a special committee, but I guess my question is, what is the difference between them saying, we think it'll take eighteen thousand dollars to do, you know, we have six topics, three to, you know, anywhere from two to four bullet points under each topic, or saying, okay, well, we'll continue on, and then they come to us and say, we would, you know, we think you guys should do this and it'll cost this much money. I mean, it's just kind of the same difference. The thing is that, you know, yes, a process needs to come up for a kind of a budget, how much we're willing to spend on these types of things in our community, and an approval process. It's not like we're just giving them a check to put into their account to go spend the money. It would be, just like everybody has asked, we'd like to see you come with some suggestions. They would be coming with suggestions and saying it costs this much money if you want to do this suggestion. So I'm really unclear why everybody's giving them such a hard time about that.
Thank you, Mr. Ann.
Thank you. I don't think we're debating the eighteen thousand dollars tonight or even discussing that. I think what we're trying to decide is, are we going to move forward? And I really don't think it's fair to burden you with whatever anyone might think about local works or any other entity or group that's in the city. This is about our sustainability committee, that's simple, and if we're going to move forward, and if we are, then let's do it, and let's have you bring that proposal to us when we're discussing the budget and give us that breakdown.
Would you be willing, rather than just giving a budget allotment now for budget requests to come to the city as needed? Would that be a more comfortable scenario?
Well, I think coming to us when we're discussing the budget and saying, here, we're requesting eighteen thousand dollars, here's specifically what it's for, and having that just put out, and that also gives our citizens the ability to be able to hear what we're requesting, they'll be able to see it, and it's clear, and then there aren't any speculations that it's going to, you know, something it's not supposed to, which I know it's not, but I'd be comfortable with that, and I think we just need to establish, are we going to, you know, are we going to do this or aren't we going to do it? We requested it, we asked you a year ago to put this together, to bring your ideas to us, and then we asked you to give us level one, two, and three. You've done everything we asked, and for us to sit here and, you know, go back and forth about what we don't want, what we do want, I think we've made it clear and you understand what we're asking, and we just need to make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Pond.
Thank you. I stand by everything I said previously, but the conversation has escalated, so it's fine, we'll talk about some other things. I mean, if this is a board and commission, frankly, that's more than I thought it was or could be. It is an advisory council presently and in this recommendation. I'm not opposed to a commission, actually. It actually will codify it, and we'd have to do an ordinance, and we'd have to put it into our Code of Laws, and we'd have to get it in. That's more than what this is now, and actually, this deserves more. I think there is a problem. We can't, I wouldn't vote for it if it didn't have a more specific and robust application process that meets the needs of the technical needs of the committee, so we probably will get hung up arguing about that, and that's fine, we can do that, and we should, because I think it can't be just two people from each district. It can't be, you know, in that case, it's just not going to work, and, you know, if some of us here want to, you know, insist it being a commission, a board and commission going through that way, honestly, I think that's an elevation that actually kind of puts it on level ground with a lot of other things, and that would be okay, but I think there's a lot of things for us to discuss and get through with, on that, and, you know, and I think the bottom line, going back to what I said before, is I, and I think, I echo what Councilmember Duran has said, we asked for this work, this work was done with a high amount of rigor and completeness, and now we're determining how it should move forward? I don't know. I mean, there is obviously some difference of opinion, and that's fine. I suppose when we get to the point of consensus, I hope we have consensus to move forward, which is to continue, to continue engage in this process, and perhaps we are not going to end up tonight knowing exactly what that looks like, or how much money and where the money goes, and that's okay. I think we should, after this conversation, come to a consensus that we would like to continue to talk about this, we'd like to continue to engage this committee to discuss how it transitions either as suggested here or in some other manner.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. So I don't want you to get the feeling that I'm undermining your work. I think it is very valuable in the community, and I think you guys have done a great job at providing us with a robust process, a robust presentation, and you guys have come back, and I know what you do is hard, especially as a volunteer, and so I really appreciate that work, and I do want to give you that credit because you deserve it. My issue with this whole situation is obviously, you know, not a breakdown of a budget, but I'm also not understanding as far as the process goes of delineation of funds, whether it would go through an administrative process, whether it would go through a council process, like there are just a lot of unanswered questions that I have, and I do want to see your work continue in the community, and I definitely think that that engagement piece is a big deal for us, but I don't know whether it's for us as a city in the way that we are operating currently, and whether we need to add another leg of that in order to do that for us. And so I would love to see you guys come back with a breakdown of a budget as to how you would spend money, and then, you know, I can definitely take a look at it at that point in time, and then get some guidance from staff as to how those funds would be dispersed and how it would be determined as to who receives those funds and what kind of projects, you know, that is delineated to. So a lot more questions than answers, unfortunately.
Mr. Fitzgerald, and then Mr. Urban.
I think your work has been stellar. I think it's really been good, and the report is very good. I've also been amazed and gratified by the quality of the people on the committee, most of whom are professionals in this field. So it has been really a fantastic thing. I think Mr. Ann is right here. What we're really doing is voting whether or not to go ahead or not, and the money we can sort out later, but I think we just have to decide now whether to move forward.
Mr. Urban.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Initially, this committee was an appointed committee by the mayor, and when it was brought to council, the city attorney walked us through the understanding of when a mayor appoints a committee, they have control over that, and in the same way, the mayor could continue to codify this committee as a committee of the mayor, and that, I think, would do us well over the next year. And in the next year, while the work that has been done so far is basically what we should do, you know, I would like to see us focus on how do we implement these things, and specifically, you know, the ask for eighteen thousand dollars, that's an easy ask to make to ask the city for eighteen thousand to do this, but I think the harder tasks are understanding what kind of public-private partnerships could be established, community-based public-private partnerships. The EPA has several models on how that might work, as well as understanding where are, you know, where is the projects or the infrastructure needs within the city that could benefit from a P3 or something like that, that then we could use the revenue from that to address other situations within the sustainability realm. So that's where I would like to look at, is not just handing out eighteen thousand dollars and saying, let us know how you spend it the end of the year. I'd like us to say, how can we generate eighteen thousand dollars off of these specific steps, and then be able to go forward and say, not only did we save the eighteen thousand, we saved fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, or whatever it might be, but that's where I would like to start from, is how can we generate this in a sustainable way?
Ms. Dozeman.
Sorry, I'll just make one last comment. So just like you are stewards of sustainability, I feel we, as a government body, are stewards of the taxpayers' money, and so logistics really do matter, so if we're moving forward, I want to know the direction in which we're going.
Ms. Duran.
I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward with the Sustainability Committee, and you will bring us a budget and a breakdown, and then we can make all those decisions from there.
So it looks like we have consensus on that. Did you?
Yeah, can I get some clarification on that? We're planning to provide a proposed budget to City Council, hopefully a week from Friday. Do you want these folks to present something to staff, and we insert that in the budget, and then we present it as part of the budget presentation, or do you want something after the fact, or?
I would like something at the time of the budget.
At the time of the proposed budget.
Do we have consensus on that?
A week.
In the next ten days?
Yes, is that possible?
The difficulty is that we don't have a full committee at this point, because we were officially disbanded, and so we have some folks that are willing to continue once they know kind of the direction that we're headed, and, you know, we tried to put some numbers together, and what's difficult about it is that we, I feel like we do need some time to dive deep into some of these items and spend, to understand where we would spend that time. spend, to understand where we would spend that time, and we just kind of have a limited committee right now, so.
How much time do you need?
It could be a separate discussion after the budget. We can always amend the budget if you want to.
It's a conversation that's already started amongst the committees, so we've already made the request of looking at your specific topic area that you were a team lead for, and which of these goals would you utilize, you know, X amount of dollars for. So we can go back to our committee, and we can, I guess, give them that charge within the next 10 days. And we may not have every topic area, but we could at least provide some more information. And if we can do it in stages or steps, that might be the way that it will need to trickle in as we have people that are available to work on it. We're all, like you said, full-time professionals as well, so.
Sure, sure. I'm comfortable with that. Is everybody else?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight. Appreciate the work that the committee has done, and I look forward to hearing back from you again. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is item number two, extended hours of operation for marijuana establishments. This was a request brought forth by Councilmembers Fitzgerald and Dozeman. Do you want to, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Miss Leah wants to. Do you want to? Okay. Essentially, we have five marijuana vendors in Wheat Ridge, and we, in our code, we require that they close at 7:00 p.m. The problem is, all of our neighboring cities close at 10:00, or in Edgewater's case, at midnight. And our vendors feel like they are at a competitive disadvantage. So this is just sort of a fix to our existing code to allow our five vendors to compete with other cities better. They're still not going to be able to compete with Edgewater, but they will be able to compete with Denver. And that's the long and short of it. It's just a code fix.
Okay. Do we have discussion? Ms. Duran.
So currently, if anybody wants to shop at any of our five shops here, after 7:00, they have to go to Edgewater or Denver, correct? So that revenue goes out of the city. Okay. And do we have an estimation of how much revenue goes?
Leakage?
Yeah.
I don't, sorry.
Okay. I can guess. All right, thank you.
And Mr. Fitzgerald, would this be recreational and medical?
Yes.
So this would be a benefit to, I guess, medical patients if they needed to go after hours or later in the evening to purchase their?
Right. I just, don't hold me in this, because I'm not really sure this is accurate. I believe we make about $750,000 in marijuana taxes now, and I believe the marijuana vendors have said that they can increase their business by maybe 20 percent. So don't hold me in that, because I'm, yeah. So that's the best answer I know.
Ms. Hoppe.
I think that it's fair for us to give our businesses the same advantages some of the areas around us, so that they're not, people aren't going out of our community to spend their money. And so I would support allowing the extended hours of the three extra hours a night for them to be able to keep our money in our community.
Ms. Seay.
Duran.
Duran. Thank you.
You're welcome. So it's seven days a week, correct? That's where we are right now? Okay. Just wanted to double-check that.
Additional discussion? Do we have?
Why is everyone looking at me? We know what's going on, Sarah. I was going to stay mute. I had a speech prepared, I was going to stay mute, but since everyone's expecting it, I personally don't believe that we should be in the marijuana business in this town in the first place. I think in the long term, it's going to be harmful to our citizens. And I understand the argument. I have not, I have actually the option tonight of being the yellow vote, the abstain vote that we don't allow from the dais, because I really don't have to make a final decision on this until it comes before us at council. I wish everyone would kind of soulfully consider where we're headed with marijuana anyway, and I don't know if the citizens are ever going to make us revisit that decision. So I was going to abstain tonight and just not add to the background noise, but it's one of those deals where I understand, we already have jumped into the deep water, and we have the code, and do we then go all the way, you know, go all in or not? And I just don't know how to proceed right now. So I'm going to kind of push the yellow button. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, some of these questions bring up thoughts about, we have a current cap within the city of the number of licensed recreational marijuana stores and whatnot, but, you know, we're also isolated in some regards because our neighboring jurisdictions don't allow the sale of recreational marijuana. And so, you know, as it relates to the benefit to the dispensaries, obviously, they would say that they benefit greatly from additional hours, but they're already in a pretty, you know, kind of sweet spot in the sense that they're sitting in a sort of a protected market, so to speak, because we only allow five. So, you know, it's, you know, how much, and what is the, you know, sales tax generation coming from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.? You know, it's something that I'm not convinced either way that it's a good way to go. I just, I don't see us losing out a tremendous amount of money from the sales from 7:00 to 10:00 that we're not already gaining back because we're one of the only cities that allows the retail sale of marijuana in Jocelyn County. So I see it as sort of six of one have to have a dozen of another, that if we're talking about extending hours, you know, what other aspects of this trade have we learned about in the past few years, or lessons learned that we could modify or change? We currently don't offer any city-based tax on this at the present time, so there's a lot of, you know, additional questions that we could bring up in this discussion, but I'm just not ready to make up my mind about the hour question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'm going to ask for a consensus that we instruct staff to bring us forward a bill for the purpose of extending hours till 10 o'clock for our marijuana industry.
Two, three, four, five. That would have consensus. Okay, so we have, that was five. Okay, so we have consensus to bring forward a motion to that effect. You got that?
I got that.
Okeydoke. Our next is item number three. This is the Action Center funding request. Do you have a, you want to make a presentation on that?
Sure. I provided to you in your staff memo a background on the Action Center's request. As you all know, you remember, they came to a study session a few weeks ago and gave a little bit of history on where they're at and why they are on this fundraising effort to raise a million dollars. They don't have a specific request yet to us, but in their presentation, they threw out a $200,000 number for all the cities to pool money together and support their efforts to raise a million dollars. The county has already given $50,000, and they committed to giving in another $200,000 if the cities come up with a $200,000 match. And typically, when we work together regionally in a county, we break down these contributions by population. I put a little chart in there which would show how much City of Wheat Ridge's contribution would be if we did break it down by population, and ours would be about $17,000. This would be a one-time request, at least at this point, unless they come back to us another year. But that's, if you remember the presentation, they said this was a, they believe they put some new things in place and hired some new staff, that they hope that this is just a one-time fundraising request to get them up to where they need to be to be sustainable long-term. So the ask tonight is if you want staff to include a number in the 2019 proposed budget, or if there's any other direction that you would have on this issue.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions. Ms. Hoppe.
So the amount that would be, that we would be looking at in our budget, if we get consensus, would be $17,267?
If that's what you want to do. And again, that's broken down by, that's a per rate share, broken down by population. I don't know what exactly all the other cities are going to do. They're having those discussions as we speak too. And, but most of them, I've shared this contribution matrix with all the other cities, and they are having those discussions with their city councils this week too, I believe.
Additional discussion? Mr. Urban.
I would be in favor of funding this request specifically as it relates to the fact that this is leveraging additional dollars from the county, and so by us putting these dollars in, we're benefiting twofold because of that, as well as the services the Action Center provides, I think, are worthwhile. I wouldn't want to see this to be an annual process, but I would like to see them come back and describe how they've been able to get themselves out of this fix once we get through this rough patch.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
I went through the outside agency program report for 2012, 2018, and I would just remind council that we already donate over $40,000 a year to this agency and like agencies. Their 2018 bequest from our outside agency committee was $2,200, but they're not the only ones asking us for money. And our total, when you look at the food bank where we give $11,000 and go down through the list, Family Tree, et cetera, we're in the neighborhood of $42,000 that we already are donating out for, let's just say, like relief to people in need.
Thank you. Additional conversation? Ms. Hoppe.
Well, I'm disappointed about the closure of their shelter and not an exact action plan on how to get that opened back up. I do feel like the work that they do is important, and I agree with Mr. Urban, and I would like to support this request, and also because not only that, but it turns into double the money, and so I think it's a good time to support them.
Thank you. Do we have consensus, then, to move forward with the request at this budget number, $17,267? Put that in our budget for the coming year? Eighteen?
Yeah, you can do anything you want. Whatever you'd like to do. Doesn't have to be that number, that's just.
You want to round it to eighteen or twenty, or?
Do we hear you're 25?
Okay, $18,000, just to stay in round numbers? Okay. You got that?
I got that.
Okay. Very good. All right, moving right along. That concludes the action items that we have on our agenda. We can move to item number four, is staff reports. Ms. Goff.
Yeah, a couple things, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Laura McAvoy, my assistant, sent out a doodle pool a few weeks ago to you all for a joint meeting with the Jefferson County School Board, and there was three dates, two dates with three different times, and they actually have cut one of those dates out based on some of your responses, and they've already scheduled that with another city. So I'm just checking tonight. I've heard from Janelle, Larry, and Zach, and Leah, I guess, and Bud. The date that they're looking at right now, they can look at other dates if this doesn't work, but it's October 10th. That's a Wednesday. A coffee, either a coffee from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., or I believe an early lunch from 11:30 to 12:30 p.m. on that same day. I think both of those times, Janelle, Larry, Zach were available. I think Leah was only available on the September day, maybe. Bud, you said you're available the lunch, 11:30 to 12:30?
I could do the 11:30 on that date, yeah.
That would be the lunch on the 10th. So for Monica, the lunch on the 10th would work for you? Okay? Either of those? Okay.
I'd prefer if that was in the City of Wheat Ridge versus out at the Ed Center or whatever, based on the locations. Just I think it'd be appropriate to have it there, as well as making sure that we have the proper notices for that meeting and whatnot.
Yeah, I believe they were requesting that we come to them, but I could see if they could bring it here.
So that there was Ed Center and one of your schools.
Oh, did it? Okay. You read it, I didn't. "At Wheat Ridge School," it said, potentially? Okay. So you'd prefer here, if we can do that? Okay.
I could do the 11:30 if it's closer to home.
Okay.
And it's not like I can't leave the city, you know, but.
All right.
Does that?
Looks like we have a majority of folks available. We'll give them that Wednesday, October 10th, 11:30 to 12:30 date.
Okay. And see if we can find a venue in the City of Wheat Ridge.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
One quick other item. I sent an email to you a couple weeks ago too about the Architectural Control Committee for the Colicrit Crossing project. Both Janice and Tim volunteered to be on that. So I went to the developer, asked if they could potentially put two council members, and I think they're okay with that, but after further discussion, I think we did, I don't think ever anybody realized that there's somewhat of a conflict having an elected official on there, because the process of the ACC Committee is reviewing, is going to be reviewing SDPs, the specific development plans, for all the different development out at the site. Those SDPs then go to Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission denies them, the appeal board is City Council. So it would, there would be a conflict. You would have to recuse yourself if you're on, if something did come to City Council. I mean, we can always do that if that's something that you'd still want to do, but there is that conflict that they really didn't realize would be in place. If you do want to move forward, they really only would like to appoint one council member, so we'd have to make a decision on, we could flip a coin, or you guys could arm wrestle or something. But if you don't want that conflict, they would suggest that we don't.
Actually, I think, I don't know about Tim, but I had volunteered if you needed volunteers. I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say Tim? I meant Larry. Larry and Janice are the two that.
My other brother by.
Yes, it was Larry and Janice are the two.
I would prefer to be available in case it comes back from planning to be able to fulfill my elected duties as a city councillor. So I would withdraw then my application, if you will, or volunteerism on that committee.
Same with you. Okay. Great, thank you. They're fine with that. They think that's best, too. They would rather have a full council in case it comes back. Okay, I'll pass it on. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. It's time for elected officials' reports. I'll go by hands and, are there any elected officials? Mr. Pond.
I just, I want to apologize to Mr. Matthews for my testing this at the beginning of the meeting. It was probably off-camera, but I'll apologize on-camera. I'm glad you had a chance to say what you wanted to say.
Ms. Dozeman.
So on a lighter note, I just wanted to welcome back all of our students. They had started last week and this week, and I think, at least from my review of Facebook, it seems like everything went off really well, and all of the students are really happy to be back at school. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of our teachers and staff and our principals for coming back with a lot of enthusiasm and making that situation great for students.
Thank you. Additional official reports, reports from our elected officials, however you phrase Well, I don't see any more discussion out there. If there is no further business for the good of the order, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.